I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does anybody need minutes?
Thank you.
Do we have any guests here for today's meeting? Oh, I take that back. Kim is here.
Are you a guest, Kim?
No.
Kim, we're just kind of...
You're just a member of the group, that's it.
Thank you. Just a suggestion, perhaps you could take the agenda out of order, do the meeting minutes.
Yes.
And then they may be wrapping up shortly, so I know if they do, Kendra will pop over.
And Sam.
Has everybody had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes from last month?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any concerns, questions, changes that need to be made?
Nope.
Nope.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
March 3rd? March 3rd minutes.
One of those too. Okay, we can do that.
We didn't do that.
March 3rd minutes.
Oh. Do we have those here?
Yes.
How come I don't?
That was a concurrent meeting.
One page.
The one page.
I don't have that.
It's underneath here somewhere. It's in the package, yeah.
It's only one page.
Yeah, but it is in very full?
No.
Okay. Well, I don't have it then. I guess I got chipped.
Do you want me to make a copy for you?
Yes, please. Who else needs them?
Does anybody else need a copy?
She can have mine, actually. I have it at home.
Yes, payments included as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. I don't have to get up and scare it up?
Don't have to get up again, Paul.
It's not easy to get up in this room.
Take your chair with you.
If you get a glass of wine, I would.
I did read these, but I think we should take at least a couple of minutes to give everybody the opportunity to brush up on...
You have to super remember, actually. I can't remember yesterday.
No kidding, huh?
It was the...
I have one.
Oh!
Anybody want pizza?
Sure!
It's a small room.
I have some pizza bar. Some plates behind you.
We're in for the birthday lunch every night.
Oh, okay.
Monte's Pizza from the...
And if we need more, there's more.
Thank you. I didn't have lunch, so...
Okay, go right ahead. Sorry about that compliment to Kendra.
Oh, okay. Can somebody give me that?
This piece?
Yeah.
This piece?
The middle piece, I don't know.
That piece.
Do you mind my fingers here?
I don't mind people's fingers.
I think it's glued.
Whoops.
You want one in one?
Yes, I want that piece too, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Just take it with your fingers. I'm not afraid. Thank you.
Yeah, one small one for me, please.
There you go.
What a deal. I'll have one, thank, a small one.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much. Oh, look at that. Great.
Here, if somebody needs a paper towel.
Oh, that's even better.
This is being televised?
Oh, that's right.
I'll give cheese and pepperoni. Very good.
Give you one, sir? Oh, no.
Kim, you want one, right? You want one?
No.
I said cheese and pepperoni.
Oh, no, he was asking what it was. I tell the physical we do for birthday lunch.
It's gonna be yelled.
When back March 3rd, meeting minutes. Are there any concerns or errors that anybody can spot? I move we accept the March 3rd minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody here with a public comment? No public comments at this point. Kim?
I'll share what I... I looked over Kendra's notes, the few things I can speak to, and then perhaps if she's done, there's more she can add. Two things, as you know, the WRTA van service will go into effect July 1st. So there's a group in there today hearing more about it. The one thing that they are providing information on is how to pre-register. As of June 23rd, individuals who may want to use the service can call and pre-register. It's just some very basic information. That way, when you do need to call and schedule an appointment, it'll actually... It will save you a little bit of time to do... They'll have your information in the computer. So there's a session this week and another one next week. And then Kendra has also been doing outreach to places in the community to make them aware. So this really is expanding the service. Just a reminder, the vans today don't go out of town. The WRTA vans will do trips to Worcester for medical appointments, as well as some of our... To Marlborough Hospital in Hopkinton, so...
Oh, he didn't mention that.
That's hopkin.
Southborough.
Sorry. Southborough. Thank you. Thank you. Southborough. Southborough Medical, or I'm not sure, I think the name has changed. So those are the places that will go for medical appointments. And then the... So again, we're trying to get word out because there are likely individuals who are not users of the current van service, or may not be folks who are familiar with the Senior Center. So wanting to get word out as widely as we can. Coming up, Kendra has in her director's report the summer Tuesday program lineup. So I think she has... And I think you all have that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So that looks to be fully programmed. And just another note, as of July 1, the Tuesdays as a late night will go into effect. It will continue beyond the summer. As of July 1, the Senior Center will start to model the hours that Town Hall is adopting. As of today, Town Hall is open 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, Friday, 7:30 to noon. So that's how the summer schedule will be set up here, and then it will continue. Whereas traditionally, the Senior Center adapts to a summer schedule and then goes back in the fall. We'll continue to have the late Tuesday night, which is a real opportunity to do some more programming for, you know, folks who may not have the ability to come during the day. Meals, expand the meals, things like that.
Speaking of meals.
Does that mean the vans will be available for that, to continue the late Tuesday?
So, yes, the van service into Worcester will likely still end the... It doesn't... At this point, the intent is not to have medical trips into Worcester available through the WRTA until 8 o'clock, but to use our vans for those trips or events or programs related to Tuesday night.
Oh, okay.
We currently have lunches on Fridays, and it's still the same, still continuing that, at least through June. What happens when we close at noon? Usually lunches from noon to 12:30 or 1:01.
I don't know. I think Kendra was considering shifting to a breakfast, a Friday breakfast. So I... That's, you know, her prerogative. I don't... We... She mentioned that. I don't know what she landed on in terms of her plans. Yeah.
Do they call the WRTA number for everything?
No. So for...
Our vans, do they still call here?
Our expectation at this point is we will use our vans for programs that are advertised. So in the newsletter, if there's an organized shopping trip to North Borough Crossing, it would be clear to call the Senior Center to register for that. And the van trip for those types of programs would be handled through that registration.
So it'd be a little tricky for a while, who to call?
I don't think so. I think for any... We'll use our vans for programs. So if you need a ride for a medical appointment, it'll be WRTA. If it's a program that we've advertised, that's what we will use our vans for.
And our local trips, I mean.
Yes. But those will be advertised events. So our hope is to really call out... I think Kendra's thought about how to do that. Really call out that for this program, which includes transportation, you need to call the Senior Center. Yep. And then obviously, there will be a period, and staff here will be directed to... To direct folks to call the WRTA if they're arranging transportation for a trip.
Well, would it be assumed if you sign... If there's a sign up for a program?
Yes.
That you wouldn't have to call because you assume the bus is...
Exactly. When you sign up for the program, yes.
Because that puts more calls back to here again, some of them, obviously.
So if you call to sign up for the program, it should all be handled together.
Good.
Correct.
Question, when you were speaking about where the WRTA will take people for medical appointments, are they going to go to the Cancer Care Center in Milford?
No. That question came up, no. Milford is outside of the area that the WRTA can serve.
That's fine.
Yep.
Is Auburn as well?
Yes.
Only Southborough, Marlborough.
I think one thing to keep in mind, if you're aware... If you're aware of people who have a need, they should still call the Senior Center because it's helpful if there are any other resources. I think people should still call and ident... If they... It's helpful to know what the need is.
And how soon can we talk about transportation in the town of Westborough for religious services on Saturdays and Sundays? I would just give anything, there's such a need for it. So that's something, and we need to put it on the back burner.
Yeah.
But we need to keep that back burner nice and warm, so.
We need to turn it off.
I mean, it won't happen in the coming fiscal year, but...
But this is the future.
I think there's been a lot of discussion about how we use the fleet that we have as this model. I mean, we have a year to understand how having the WRTA vans works. And then what's... How do we continue to operate our vans, for what purposes, how many in the fleet, all of that? So it's nice that we have the opportunity to put the service in place and see how that plays out before we have to make a decision about our vans.
Because our drivers are still town employees.
Yep.
They don't work for WRTA.
Correct. Correct. Everybody driving the WRTA van will be a town employee. The model is funded by the WRTA, but we retain those individuals as employees whose salaries are ultimately reimbursed through the WRTA.
Which would not include the time they drive the...
Correct.
So the money that we're saving on repairs and all that kind of thing is still going to be running the vans? Just not to the extent?
Correct. And that's a piece of what we're looking at, is what's the most cost-effective way and what are our needs? The other thing we've looked at is first, we've had an interest, I think as you all know, one of the things that came out of the needs assessment was an interest in more trips. And there is the opportunity there to... We're limited right now by the size of our largest van, which sometimes means there are people on a wait list for those trips. There's an opportunity to use services, coach type of transportation for those. So that's something Kendra's also looking at. Where might... If a trip, if we can get enough participants, instead of relying on our vehicles, we do the trip through the services, the companies that are out there and do that.
Kim, is the contract with WRTA a one-year contract, and then we revisit everything?
Yep. The agreement that we'll execute with them, it's... They do it for a year. And just a reminder, there's no fee for using the service. For, I think they indicated for the past six years, the... Because of federal grants, they... None of their communities using the service have had to have fees in place. So I think it's tied to their fiscal year, so we will do a one-year agreement.
To change the subject, Jack is college student as an intern. Do you know what his functions will be, or what he'll be doing here?
I think Kendra has him doing some outreach. He's got a limited schedule as well. Yep.
I know nothing about that. What is that about?
Right here, at the bottom.
Yes.
The report. Oh, oh, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Second page, at the bottom.
Yes, I see it.
He has limited of... He has limited available. It's a... Yeah, he's in... Someone who expressed an interest in getting some exposure to municipal government. And we have him working with a few different places, and one of them, Kendra had some ideas about some things he could do to help out, so he is here for part of his time.
So not necessarily working here in the office as the other staff does?
No, he may be in here at times. He's here today, actually. He's in helping...
Always.
He's serving pizza today, and I think he managed signups.
What school does he go to? Just curious.
Syracuse. I know that. I think I liked that one.
You know that?
The grad school at Syracuse. Yeah. So he's...
Yeah.
Good thing I remember. I'd be in trouble if I didn't. But he... So he... Yeah. And he just wanted some exposure to municipal government, which is great.
Where does he go to school?
Syracuse.
While looking at this page, I think it's exciting, truthfully, the new classes and programs that are going to be offered. American Mahjong, Woburn Club, line dancing, and tap dancing. And down at the Maquis at the end of the driveway here on Main Road, it says Dancing Tonight.
Oh, that's the...
That's the square dancing.
But it's Choreographed Ballroom Dancing tonight. And the square dancing is on Thursday nights, but it's not open to the public. I think that was for people coming who didn't know where the location was. There will be open sessions to the public eventually, but it's usually the first week in September. And then on the Tuesday nights, the square dancing, July 29th, will give a demonstration. And in the past, occasionally, they've gone up for one big round circle just to do a couple of steps. But I... Depends on the dinnertime and everything else.
Who's doing the ballroom dancing?
Pardon?
Who's doing the ballroom dancing? Who teaches it?
Her name is Beer Get Something or Other, and her daughter comes with her and does some of it.
Because I know we just have a Fred Astaire studio now in town.
A what?
Fred Astaire Dance Studio.
Well, this is not Fred Astaire at all. This is specifically choreographed ballroom dancing. So foxtrot and things that you used to do, but these are specifically choreographed steps.
Yep.
But that's not Fred Astaire-type dancing.
Well, we do choreographed things.
Did they do that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I would think so. I don't know. I'm just a guess.
It's just different from social dancing. Well, it's something's an activity here. I think these other things, the... And the supporters have made a generous donation to offset the cost of some of these programs. And I really find that gratifying.
Yes.
And appreciated.
Absolutely.
We've talked about the WRTA, and I just think it's a great thing that we're doing here. We are advocating for our senior citizens. There's a question about that. So I would like to clarify that the WRTA services are to enhance services to seniors.
We have a lot of programs. I did pick up a couple flyers from a senior center, and their calendars are at all like ours. We really need larger blocks in the calendar. And they're... They have blocks like this.
Oh, okay.
And you look at the programs we offer, our blocks are full. We have a lot of programs.
I was going to bring that up, as a matter of fact. That's something I wanted to mention. I think that the new monthly bulletin, if you sit and read it, it's kind of that is set so that these are the things that are happening onsite, these are the trips that are coming up, these are the meals that are going to be served. And as you go through it and read it, it answers questions that you may have that would save calling the Senior Center to say, well, you know, what's going on? So I really applaud, and I hope everybody else feels the same way.
Absolutely. You're much more organized.
It was organized very differently this time, and it grouped, like you say, by meetings, by meals, by so forth. And it's very, very easy to follow that way. Very nice.
And knowing that you're in the kitchen, Guido, is... Food is one of the first things I look at.
We're very limited now with what we've been doing, but if I might, I might... I do want to bring up one thing related to the kitchen, and that is the broken freezer. It's been broken now for four, five months. And since we're going to be here for over a year, I would say as a minimum, I really think we should consider doing something, either replacing it, getting something... It doesn't have to be as big maybe, but we need another freezer.
I guess I... I think you're speaking as a user of the kitchen. I would have a conversation with Kendra about that because they've looked into it, and I think there's the... Have a... Kendra needs to address that, yeah. Because she has looked into it, and I don't know, the cost of replacing that freezer is significant. We did have a conversation with the supporters, and there was some discussion about that's probably outside of what they are comfortable funding, so we don't otherwise have any funds available for it.
But it is a capital item. It is a piece of the facility.
It's not because it's a capital item if it's over $25,000 from the standpoint of...
Okay, I may be using the wrong technical term, but it is part of this facility. It is broken. It is something that was used, and I know right now, you know, we're overflowing the other smaller freezer, and they've been doing more and more meals, as you can see from the newsletter, which are very popular. So I suspect that that's something that we'd like to continue, which means we need that freezer to ace.
For instance, the May birthday luncheon, we didn't have hoodies. They passed out ice cream sandwiches.
That was a deliberate decision to go with sandwiches instead of hoodies this month.
They were... It would have been easier to slurp it out of a hoodie cup than have it dripping and...
They were frozen.
It was tough to eat. And many people just kind of... I did. I just pushed it aside.
Guido, has someone looked at the freezer to see if it's possible to repair it?
I don't know that.
Yes.
I know that there was a repair. We repaired it like two or three times last year. So I think that was one of the reasons why there was discussion about, well, is it worth trying to repair it?
I think we're... I mean, we're getting into operational matters, so again, I would encourage you to take it up with Kendra. But we did. The freezer's been... It's at the end of its useful life. The parts aren't readily available, and given the number of times it's been repaired, it was determined it wouldn't be prudent to spend more money trying to get it back to life.
This discussion is not within our purview, so...
Why?
Because Kendra's in charge of it. That's what Kim keeps saying, to talk to Kendra. Kim Kent doesn't have any answers for it.
We are still advocates for the seniors as part of our facility.
But we cannot resolve anything in this meeting, I can't.
I'm bringing it up as a need.
Which apparently Kendra's aware of, so has to be discussed with Kendra.
We are being televised, and hopefully people are watching in the coming days. And they are aware, particularly when we are speaks about using the kitchen, the facilities in the kitchen. They are important to the programs that we do here. So I don't say that we shouldn't say anything. We're advocating for our seniors.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, but it's been brought up, and several times Kim has said, discuss it with Kendra. So it's been brought up. It's nothing that we can make any decisions about. So it's just kind of a waste of time.
I'm sorry. We don't waste time. We're advocating for our seniors. And that's what we are charged with doing. And we have the advantage today of having Kim with us. Kendra cannot be here. Guido will have the opportunity in the coming days to perhaps speak with Kendra. And we'll put that in your lap, Guido. And I do think the second item on the agenda for today is the fact that Kendra is our senior and Social Services Director. So in these few pieces of paper, I think we have lots of things to be very, very thankful for.
I just want to say, with the director's reports, it saves four or five pages on the minutes anyway. This would have saved me a lot of time.
Yes.
Anyway.
A lot of paper.
Yes. That's my two cents.
I agree. I agree. It's good information.
Did we have a vote on March 3rd minutes?
We did.
Yes, we did.
I just want to cross it off.
And look at the May statistics right on the first page. 328 total rides, 1,468 swipe-ins, and that's for the people that use the machine. You still see people just go right by.
Could I recommend that we have an on... A continuous tally of these statistics? March, April, May, June, July, August, September, so that we have comparative numbers?
So we have... We can see the trend, you mean?
Yeah.
I will certainly speak to Kendra.
Because in March, the attendance was 50, and it's now 46.76. The number of rides has gone down to 328 from 482 in March.
I think we kind of had a comparative report before. She did maybe on a quarterly basis. We did have that before, one thing, so we should probably go back to that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
I would just also mention, I know one of the things Kendra made an effort to do... I would just also mention, I know one of the things Kendra made an effort to do when she first arrived, just to make sure that we're collecting the data in a way that gives us good numbers. So that could be a little bit of the variation, just the way things were tracked, if that's evolved.
Cause I think eventually we're supposed to have a quarterly budget update, I think. And you could add it in there, the comparative attendance and whatever.
And I do think perhaps some of the quarterly numbers go back to the fact that there were many outbreaks of COVID again, right here in Westborough. Not an epidemic, but enough that people were ill, people stayed home.
Might want to know.
Yes.
Did you film that?
We will continue to, I will talk with Kendra and I'm sure she will continue to be there.
Was it my understanding last time when we talked about the number of attendants, it wasn't including community center activities?
Right, we're still working on a good way, particularly as we start a new fiscal year on July 1st. We've had some conversations about how to make sure we're capturing all the attendance at the events. Um, particularly there's more coming over to it.
So that could, yeah.
Is there a check-in center at the community center currently in use for seniors?
There's not.
We don't have the kiosk, no.
We're doing paper check-ins for right now. Um, but it's very expensive to get a separate kiosk set up. I'm waiting to get a couple of quotes back from my senior center to see what for a smaller unit, what that would cost. So he's putting together a couple of options for us.
Do you have a handheld unit that I think the bus drivers can use in a limited way?
That's one of the options he's putting together for us. We don't have the, we don't have enough units for now, but that's, that's what he's putting together. No, no, it's okay. I don't think there's any chairs.
Go get your chair.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm good. I just feel funny standing over all of you, but I don't think we could, I don't think we could get another chair in here if we tried to.
It's, it's cold. Need for more space. Has anybody looked at the library area?
I have.
I have as well.
Yeah.
And I just wondered, I have a question about it if I can.
Sure.
Why not? Uh, it was my understanding that they were gonna move into the space that was the future. You build out space. I was very surprised when I went in there the other day and they're taking the entire space.
So what they agreed to is anything that's in that front portion can be easily moved back. So anything that requires more effort to shift around and needs to be, it's, it's set up in the back. They understand that if anything were to proceed before they are able to move back, that that front space would have, would be relinquished.
Cause I was like.
Yep. I think they tried to strike a balance of not having it looked, because the full space is available, trying to make use of that front portion.
There was a little blurb about that in last Friday's community, yeah.
I was surprised when I read it and I said, oh my gosh, I could do with that, it's. And at the community center, there are schematics, uh, architectural drawings, whatever they are, uh, blueprints.
Yep.
Showing what the build-out's gonna be like in this, the second floor and the first floor.
Kendri, did you have anything you would like to say to us?
We touched on WRTA and the summer schedule changing as well as the events.
Okay, great. Uh, nothing specific, so I'm, I am really sorry that I missed most of the meeting. I am the only staff person that's here today and we also had the WRTA meeting, so it was a little hectic. I really appreciate Kim stepping in, probably reading my director's report for me. Um, the WRTA meeting, uh, that just wrapped up went really well. We have another one next Monday at the Forbes Peninsula Building in the Great Hall. I'm really trying to encourage everybody who is or may ever be interested in using the senior center transportation to come. We will again offer lunch that day. Uh, I would love to get as many people in attendance as possible. I think today we had around 35 or so. Uh, but there's definitely more people that are using our buses that did not come today. So as, as many people as you can spread the word to, the better.
Is it too late to register now or?
No, no, stop with Katie on your way out and she'll sign you on.
Oh, okay, I'll do the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I as well. What time is the Forbes thing?
It's the same as today, so it's 12 until 1:30 or so. And if anybody needs transportation to that, call the senior center and we will bring people to the transportation meeting if needed.
So only, but while we have lively discussions, but we would ask that you give some time to Guido. He has concerns regarding the freezer.
Yeah.
That's all else is, but if you would dedicate some time.
No problem.
We would all appreciate that. And I would love to tell you also that we had a request going forward to have a summary every month with.
In other words.
Actually like a trends report.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Thanks.
And, um, some excitement please.
I hope so. Linda, did you notice that I used your picture in my report?
Yeah, we picked you.
Marilyn was in last month, so I'm, so I gotta go around and pick out one, one of all of you.
Marilyn's in this month too.
Oh.
That's so popular.
There you go.
Just shows I'm active.
I was gonna say, I mean, Marilyn's here more than the rest of you, you gotta step it up.
It's a difference.
Also, we had a discussion about the formatting of this month's newsletter.
Yep.
Phenomenal.
Oh, good, great, good, great. Uh, yeah, we, we worked it out a little bit. I know the poster on the back, the font was pretty small. We didn't really tell until it was out, unfortunately, but we have the physical copy of that poster here. So anyone that calls and is interested, we can get them that.
That was a good job.
Oh, yes. Pass that along. And the cards are from, I believe, a third grade art class. I think they're, I think they're third graders. We had just enough for everybody to get one in this room, so that was, that was.
I think it's more than third.
And they even knew I wore glasses.
They just guessed.
And they called me a dude. I don't know if that's good or bad.
Well, I don't think it was.
I know.
Yeah. I think they were, I wish I could remember exactly. I don't. I think they were third graders.
Were they here? Did they do this?
Their teacher dropped them off. Um, I guess they did it as like an end of school project.
Oh, nice.
I hope we can include those in a hundred and thirty minutes. What a wonderful way to start our afternoon.
All right, that's it for me. So that's it for you and that's it for.
Does anybody have anything else that would like to bring up today? May I please have a motion? Diane?
I was gonna ask, I know we have a ton of programs, but, uh, and sometimes we bother to get a trip to, uh, get ice cream elsewhere. There's a Tugus farm in North Pole that's very green. Right now it's strawberry, chocolate time.
Oh, okay. I, so we don't have anything in the works, but someone else has asked me about the ice cream. I think we would be looking for later in the summer so we could advertise it really well. But yeah, I think it would be a lot of fun to do something like that in August or something.
Ice cream's always good.
No matter when.
Yep.
The winter, summer, whenever.
So keep, keep in touch, keep reading, because great ladies are coming.
They are.
May I at this time have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Almost in Denver.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.